Acknowledgement of the recording. We have a hard stop at 6:00 PM in order to allow time to prepare the room for the planned commission meeting at 6:30. We'll continue to have monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of every month at 5:00 o'clock. As a reminder, this is an advisory board with no authority to make policy. The end result for this committee is to draft and propose an ordinance for solar energy systems and battery storage systems. So what happens is even when we get done, if we've come together and we propose a solar updated ordinance for the town of Culver, that has to go to the plan commission. The plan commission can then accept, reject, send it back, do their old thing with it. And then after it gets through the plan commission, that has to go before the town council. So there's a lot of steps. So at this point, we're just going to be, we're just an advisory board working on this. And I don't have the previous minutes. We'll have to cover those, the previous minutes next month or this meeting and the last meeting. Other than that, we could take off where we left off at when we had this list of different things everybody took home, different ideas, concepts to start throwing out opinions. I guess best to start in front. We got through maybe the first page or two last time. I'm all ears. And if you're online, would you please mute?
The one thing that I liked last, from last meeting, just to kind of bring us back up to speed was Chester's way of differentiating, especially when we're talking about in town, removing ground based mounting systems and allowing for only roof based systems. I felt that was an excellent idea. It was accounting for the idea that somebody else's energy source is somebody else's blight to look at. I thought that was being thoughtful from other different perspectives. So I appreciated that, just kind of share with the audience a little bit where we were at. And then the presentation, I mean, the really, I think for me, the lesser issue is the micro systems. The real thing is the farm scale that we're really going to be discussing. And that's ahead of us right now, I'm sure, and where we're at. So I think focusing on that might be the real task in front of us.
Okay, thanks for the update.
And I will say for the audience, our farm scale is defined as 10 acres or more of area designated for solar panels. So it's going to be rather large to begin with. And we do have from the micro scale, small scale, medium scale, large scale, farm scale. But since farm scale can be the one that's predominantly going to be an issue to neighbors and the general public a lot more than just a family.
Okay. So everyone reviewed it. I hope or had a chance to look at Lewis. I'm open for your, for your comments now. The county has a 325 foot setback from residents, not from the property line, which is very unusual. All the other ordinances are based on property lines. So in this one, I don't know how far we jump ahead, if that's fine. In this one, it's they're 500 feet from the property line. That's what's, what's it on these notes?
That only applies to farms get brown mountain. Right. Ground in the micro scale.
Well, it applies to that and I'm not, we'll have to look at large scale because Well, I think it's a big difference if it's from your structure versus your property line. If you have a large lot and your house is 200 feet from the property line, that means the whole solar field up 200 feet closer.
And the other thing should be the property line because then if it's from their structure, their neighbor's home. What if they decided their house burns down and they decide to build it in a different spot? And was they have the right to do?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think you've got your point as well as part of one property that they want to put on, you're talking they should 200 feet from that. The next one may be only 50 feet from the property line itself. And then you're, now you're talking about the owner property could have a different view of what they can do than what, you know, when you're using some type of structure.
I guess that's the other question I have is with 500 foot setback from central energy, Jason, right away, property line and interior project property lines, is there going to be anywhere inside of the town of Culver that can be built on?
You're having not to be.
Even with 350, you don't have enough.
So it's just out of town though. It affects our whole zoning. But we haven't, Culver has, does not have the full two miles of.
Those outside of city limits to the.
It would affect anything within Culver zoning boundaries.
As a risk we have fallen.
The primary, if we're going to target it, we could speak more precisely. I think Steve would be more of our northern properties moving north from the town. Corporation limits towards Bar Oak. That's where we're probably going to be confronted the most with farm scale solar, at least as it's being discussed right now.
Talk about looking in ending our northern part.
That, that talk is over very. We terminated that last week right now, as of now, just as an update. Yeah, no, it's okay.
When you look at that, it was going to be done.
No, that's not, no.
Really, that's ten. So that was a good answer.
Yep. How about a simple no?
There's just another threat. I don't, I don't want to have to have a whole lot of questions.
Let's just look at the second page on the inside of the second page where it says permitting. Town Culver zoning ordinance, Indiana zoning ordinances, commercial solar energy facilities are described in this ordinance. Remember, this is a draft, so it's not going to be the best language. It's not even a draft, it's notes. Are permitted exclusively in industrial zoning districts. So why don't we just start, what districts would be appropriate to put this in? Industrial, agricultural, residential, commercial? We have all kinds of districts, right? So what's, what kind of districts? We probably, I'd go out and let them say, we don't want it in anything that's residential.
Well, you can eliminate that.
Well, it's not going to fit in the residential.
When you're starting square footage that you're talking about as far as 500 feet setback or even the 325, there's nothing in town and there's very little in any of the zonings other than agricultural. And you're going to be, as far as S1, if you've got enough property that you're going to have to file for a special permit anyway for agriculture. But really those two zoning is like the only thing that would even be ethical.
I was going to say, didn't we just have a case of somebody being zoned as one that wanted to go stag so.
What do we currently have in terms of industrial options in terms of the town zoning?
Without getting up and looking, there's really limited.
It is. Industrial was stretched along state route 17 behind the cabinet factory.
That's right.
Or south of the cabinet. There's an acreage there. It could, I'm thinking maybe 40, 40 acres.
There's some acreage to this, to the south, that strip along, it's about 40.
Yeah.
These two are industrial.
The northern, south of.
This, this strip is industrial. Basically just. So along 17?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you're talking about north of by the NM 17.
North is where I think that property and ratio of the zone to industrial where differently.
It's smaller than another patch here off of Slate Street. This looks like it's also coded to be industrial one.
Yep.
It's small.
I guess the, the question motivated is, okay, so anticipating the needs of governance of, of the solar, especially in terms of farm scale solar. If we're going to determine what to zone it, I guess we need to understand what we're going to need to govern, what we need to be able to regulate and monitor, and which one will give us the most ability to do so in terms of the language of the zoning. So which one affords us the best opportunity to govern what we need to govern when it comes to solar? Is it agricultural or is it industrial?
You're saying we need to come back to this question? Before we go through, look more at this?
I think what we would have done, yes, maybe, I would, I'm suggesting it, I'm not dictating.
No, I get, I get that, but just to probably make sure I understand.
Maybe the cart to the horse, just a hair on that one.
Yeah. If it decided that we're requiring.
So it depends on if you're calling the whole thing industrial in that aspect because if you're, what's classifying it as industrial? Is it just the scale of the impermeable ground that is going to be taken up and what's going to be put in the ground? Or is the fact that what is going to be produced is predominantly going to be sold off, making it more commercial?
Point well taken, right? So.
You're not producing widgets. You're a whole different scale of what kind of pollution and then you're going to be.
What I guess I'm saying is we could research. So what we're doing is we're dealing with a, an energy producing industry. So what have, what has been done previously for wind turbine buy and for water dams? What are those classifications for those? How are those governed in terms of energy producing industry? Right? And I would be hard pressed to say any of them would probably be traditionally labeled as agriculture.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily go that because like when you make a park, it's not producing anything. It's also not actively doing something. Like I know you're collecting energy, but it's not emitting any.
Yeah, no, I agree. That is just considerations, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's getting into the weeds.
A little bit. But what is it that we have to be able to do when it comes to solar in terms of governance within the zoning ordinance? And that would help us maybe understand what it would be zoned.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'm making notes and I'll just think out loud too, but I was thinking about putting this actually into what we have into an ordinance format and then leaving blanks to fill in. For instance, they're permitted in ex-zoning and we can fill that in later. Okay.
And I would say, just for information, if, if you leased your land or wanted to lease your land, you would also have to or sell your land solar. If we choose to have it listed as industrial, then we would have to request an industrial involvement for the total.
You would have to go through a rezoning process?
Yeah.
And the other issue down the line is.
No way. So agricultural land is industrial until someone can turn it into industrial.
Right.
Or be able to go back through that.
Right. Well, that's, that's, that's another part of the issue that we're going to have to wait for the county to hear about the decommissioning.
Actually, we're, we're going to, we're going to be waiting on the state.
And to the next level, right?
What the state's got to report due October 1st and covers a lot of things, including its Senate enrolled act 33. It's an environmental law. So the state has that due from Department of Natural Resources, October 1st of this year. And that should, from the state's perspective, answer some questions, should.
How small does their scale go? You know, or like, like we're looking at small to large, are they just looking at large?
I haven't seen the state's camps. I've seen multiple other ordinances from Indiana and other states. I haven't seen a definition from the state of Indiana. It's typically, it seems to be left up to the local jurisdictions. Okay, so I'll make a, leave that blank and move on to, so the applicant, so when they go to apply, just to start without backup, so I don't get too far ahead. The way some of this is written, most of this is written that if somebody wants to put this in, they need to go front of the BZA and, and get it as, get it as a variance to do that, something allowable in those districts. So when they fill out, ultimately fill out, we'll call it an application right now, there's a host of information that's probably going to be wanted to make a decision. That information is listed here. Submit the total value of the assets, income, economic activity that can be taxed by a taxing authority. So how much do we get? Submit an economic cost benefit analysis describing estimated increase in property tax revenues, sales tax, other taxes, not the, meaning those would increase, meaning how much more would we get because of this as a community?
Duty increases.
How would it help the economics out of Culver? Provide estimated temporary construction jobs created, estimated permanent jobs created, the cost of the project's impact on roads and infrastructure. And I'm going to stop with that one because that's a big one. That's what's, that's held up at Marshall County right now is when they put these in, our roads aren't designed for the type of equipment that's going to come down and install these. So it has to be road agreements also put in place that'll say they're going to ideally rebuild the road when they're done. Our roads are, as we all know, aren't great and our roads were never designed for heavy equipment, lots of semis, the weight of a garbage truck full is incredible or a school Then the ratio of private versus public funding for the project. In other words, they need to disclose how much of that has been subsidized from the government to them versus how much they're spending out of their own pocket. Public gets to know that.
Based on actual cost, where money comes from.
What's that?
As far as like your taxes, whatever, as far as actual value.
Yeah, I think for me, when I hear that, and I brought it up during the last meeting, I want, I think the ratio of private versus public funding is also very telling about the nature of the project and the longevity of a project. What is sustaining the project and what is being able to bring it to bear? So understanding that information when they're making application or permitting is essential because are we looking at something that's being propped up by federal subsidies? And if that's the case, then we probably need to be a little bit more concerned in terms of the longevity of the project and what we're actually investing in cost benefit wise. Because if this is, if this is being driven and this is the elephant in the room, we've all talked about it, if some of this solar is being driven by federal dollars and subsidies and that we see a regime change over the next three or four years or whatever, if this is going to be, if solar in the county of Marshall County or in the area of Marshall County is going to be propped up by subsidy federal dollars and those federal dollars dry up, where are we at? In terms of investment, I'm not saying that's positive or negative, but having that understanding prior to making decisions is, is almost essential. And I think that's, and I'll say it out loud even though it's being recorded, I think some of it's the reason people are dragging their feet a bit on this one and trying to understand it.
Culver money, private enterprise.
So a lot of the solar is, the public funds available are 26% of the projects that go in or 26% of the financing is coming from tax dollars on a lot of the solar now.
It's a good number, no, thanks.
So then, then there's a section on system upgrades, replacement will require technical review approval and location improvement permit. So if they're upgrading and they're going back through again, just like somebody remodeling their house, doing renovation, they need to reapply for a permit.
Does it count the same as if they're just popping on roll panel, getting more efficient panel on? Like if they're not structurally changing supports, if they're just changing out the panel like a pain in the fly.
Right. It's a good point, somewhere you have to draw a line between where is it an upgrade versus maintenance.
Addition after, I mean, still have to need setbacks, but if they've got the room to do it, if they want to move head forward, is that going to be a phase two project? Is it going to be?
Yeah.
It's not going to resubmit it?
And like a longevity on the allowance because like the projects in Star counties have stopped and are currently not done, do they have a timeline in order to restart and start putting things back in?
Exactly. What's the nature of the deadline?
Yeah. Or how much delay on your allowance?
So that is a good point.
So project plan.
Within that project plan, and not to be the doom and gloom guy, but is, and by the way, still trying to work all this out state and county, but is it reasonable for somebody to be expected to be able to provide decommissioning within that plan? Or is that not a reasonable request as we bring them in? And it's a question, not a statement.
It's a good question.
If you purpose that for the commission.
Purpose for and plan for.
And plan for.
Cause I don't want to get to the backside of it and, and then try to work that out.
But here's the really hard part about this. There's a big section here, it's just notes, all on decommissioning.
Yeah.
Abandonment and decommissioning requirements. So I'm going to make a note to put that in with that part, but until we can get to the abandonment and decommissioning, there's so much we don't know yet about this.
And I acknowledge that, right? On many levels, yeah.
But it's, it's in here for a reason and there's three, three pages just for that.
You know, people's mind.
It is, but it's, it's a big deal. Again, what, what happens if a company goes out of business, decides to walk away? Then the landowner ultimately could be responsible if they don't have a bond or something in place for that. If the landowner can't afford to take those out, then ultimately taxpayers are going to take that out and that lien goes back to the landowner who may lose their property.
Goes back to what Kevin talked about as far as your federal funding or whatever you had. It's gone and what?
It could.
And let's face it, a lot of these, a lot of these are, are smaller LLCs that are, that are doing this, although a lot of them share the same mailing address, they're separate, they're different LLCs, that's a fact. I mean, it's, those contractors are recorded in the county recorder's office.
Appreciate you.
Should it be? Should they be, I mean, as far as each one being, whether it be every one, every two, every three according to the same address, whatever.
So each, 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 as far as this goes, as far as I can tell right now, for decommissioning, it's going to have to be for each.
One separately.
Each one that applies for their building permit.
Yeah.
And that, that would probably be enough.
Part of the baggage. It is.
It's part of the package.
Yeah.
So that would, that would help you to the requirements.
Okay, there's the next paragraph. A special use permit shall not be issued for a commercial solar facility until the applicant submits a feasibility study demonstration that the amount of generated power can be supported by the relevant electric company and our electric grid. In other, in other words, the meaning behind that paragraph is, are they want to go put in, let's say somebody puts in a thousand acre farm and they, but they can only use 40, 50% of it because the electric grid won't accept that electricity. We don't have the capacity to do that. So that's kind of study is going to be important also to see if it's even feasible to do.
Steve, does that study exist yet?
We can't answer that, I don't know. I would imagine that the, the, I would hope the electric companies know what they could accept.
I would hope the people putting in the solar and proposing these, the solar.
Sorry, but you're five years behind. They've done that way, way long ago. All this information is available.
That's my, and hence the question. Okay.
And we, we could get that too. I'm sure we could get that to the utilities.
So you have to apply before the project can really move forward. You have to apply to the electric.
Look, I get, start with, I get your name first, so it's on record. An address? Thank you.
Paul anymore, 20944.
Thank you.
So they have to apply to get permission to even start a plan. And then the grid operator tells you how many gigawatts you can put in it. And then you develop your plan from there because they say, at this point, you can put this many watts in the system. So you, you don't just willy nilly go out and throw up a thousand acre of solar farm and go.
You understand, that's why I asked the question.
But there are cases, there are cases that that's happened now that the people, that they were built and the system couldn't sustain it.
As I say.
Based on, based on what?
They want to sell it, they want somebody to buy it. Plant, they have to have all the information and they've got it.
And if you don't follow all their rules, they're sorry, you can't get on our highway.
So when you say their rules, you're talking about the utility companies.
It's not even the utility companies, it's the grid operator.
Yeah.
So like NIPSCO has no say so in it. It's the grid.
It's actually on a smaller, it's on the next level.
It's on a huge scale and they, they go, where are you wanting to put? If you think of all those high tensile lines that we see everywhere, if you think of that as a highway.
Yeah.
And then you need an on-ramp onto that highway. So which is a substation.
Like running from Reynolds all the way over to Ohio, there was one draw right here. There you go.
Absolutely. There's six of them, I think, or eight in Bar Oak that go in different directions.
Exactly.
So that's a intersection to the grid.
Yep.
And then you come up on there and then your power is on there and then you get paid accordingly on your power. So they're not going to let you build some system that's going to blow the grid up.
That's right.
So they're not going to allow you even in there. And it's, it's not NIPSCO, it's not, it's the grid operator literally deciding what, where it can go.
So you're saying it first come, first served?
It's on a queue and you get in the queue and it might take three or four years for they even acknowledge that, okay, if you want to go ahead and build, go ahead. And then you got another four or five years of permitting to get to that.
So the queue had been shut down, which is why Star County has probably stopped because the queue had stopped because the, whatever it said, we need to, we, they needed to recalculate or do whatever they do or infrastructure improvements, whatever. But they're like, you're, we can't take that power. So they probably stopped, I don't know.
So listening, both gentlemen, listening to you, would a better question be to understand the queuing? If we're going to bring a system in and online in terms of permitting and stuff, where, where would we expect you to be queued into the grid?
What you really need to know is what it takes for them to build it. It's kind of like writing the rules. And they can't, your rules right now, there won't be any solar in Culver, that's for sure. It's like they can't meet those things. So you might as well just vote to not have solar and be done with it because if you start putting all these restrictions into it, they won't. And they don't really want to come in on a large scale at this point either.
So.
It's not going to happen.
They're not going to come into town.
Well, not into town, but.
The, the kind of project you're going to get in Culver is going to be very similar to you putting solar panels on your roof. It's going to be for a specific operation. So to, to give power to the academy or to the school or to the cabinet factory, you're not going to build a, the, the cost on putting in a 12 acre or a 50 acre field is so astronomical, you would never make that out thinking you're going to push that back up on the grid and, you know, when the power bowl out of, it's just not going to happen.
But that's, that's good information.
That is very good information. The only thing I got on that is just like what we were talking about before, to me, according to their queue that you got. And when you stop, like they stopped, I mean, is that preventing anybody else?
Oh, yeah. It froze. It was froze. Oh, yeah, it froze, it was froze. For.
I mean.
Couple, three years.
First come, first served.
You, you sign up for the queue, from our, my understanding, you sign up for the queue and you're in that spot, you're first in line, second in line, they're going to review you. So, anybody who is trying to get on the queue now, it could be a hundred or a thousand spots at a time, it's, it's not something that's. Boom, let's build, let's knock out a hundred acres, uh, north of town and, and throw that in the grid, it's just not going to happen.
Right.
It's going to be something that, again, is going to save you money on the school. Power, or the academy is going to want to put it out at the airport to save themselves.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Bills, or, or. Here is going to put it to save the factory money.
It's much more of a supplementary rule, right, that you're coming in very specific on a very specific internal grid almost.
So, you guys, really, you're probably the person you'd want to talk to would be Nippsico.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be more apt to talk to you on the lower scale. Of what's going to go on, but you're not going to have. I don't care how far you push out your zoning, but you're not going to have that big Bass Lake project here.
Yeah, um, that's why I focused, the only real.
Answer here, the de-commissioning. The county, I believe, is an ordinance where, when you start the project, you got to say it's going to cost. X dollars to decommission the, the project.
Yeah.
And then you have to put that bond up before the.
They're still working on that.
Yeah.
They have a servant question.
Surety bond on that, right?
The county attorney is still working on trying to get those binder things in place.
And then they relook at what it's going to cost every three years, and then if it's more money, you have to throw more money into that kitty to take it down.
That's right, that's the, it works in the surety bond, basically, as a guarantee, okay.
Well, it's a sliding scale because, you know, things, what it costs.
Eight increases, that's exactly right, right.
So, it's like looking at your roads, which are horrible, you know, you're, you're always.
I haven't heard that.
For what you're going to need for in ten years down the line, that you should be, I don't think we are.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep, thanks for that information. Um, with that, with that information, uh, to me, it still seems important, we make sure that they've done, done that. And don't, don't just build it.
Oh, well.
As far, as far as when they, as far as our checklist for us to have that on the checklist, that.
Sure.
That they can demonstrate they've done that.
But it's good to know that it's been initially done, we're recon, our role is to reconfirm then, and that, that, all right, I appreciate that.
No, I mean, uh, and again, if you're looking at how to phrase your bonding in your ordinance, I would say do that work. Before you, before you pound the first nail, you have to have that bond and then, you know, address it in whatever. Address it every year, every three years, every ten, whatever you feel.
Making sure there's adequate increment for the inflated cost of decommissioning inside.
Absolutely.
Absolutely agree.
As I say, um.
I can get cheaper.
No.
And, and that's why the state's working on this now also.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of questions around the decommissioning of it. That may be some of the hardest part of this whole thing. That's why it's going to be, that's, that's why it's the last. It is, appreciate that, thank you.
I would say that there probably, if there are actually zoning. Area, there probably aren't too many farms that are actually large enough to have the suits of bad ones.
Are you looking at that map or that map?
Unless they.
And your zoning box, you basically have the, the open farm between seventeen Thorn up to sixteen. And there's not enough acreage there to put in a super plant, so again, you're not going on the grid, you're doing something smaller. To.
And it's probably probably the academy owns. Republic's Maryland.
Well, I think, I think you said it, planning ahead, we don't know what the future holds, so we want to make sure we write an ordinance with it, we're going to be perfected in the future.
Ordinance so strict that the cabinet factory goes, we want to put up solar, but I ain't dicking with all this. And we're moving to North Carolina, so, I mean, you, you want to have.
Right, but I don't want.
Leeway in there to where it's not so strict that they're going.
Well, and, and to that point, that's why it's broke down into different, different sizes. Yeah, so it is broke down into different sizes.
They had out here on. You know, over the town, and then the cabinet factory or the academy or the. Cabinet factory over here, whatever, won't be able to do what they do if the queues are remixed from.
What, what?
Well, they won't be in that.
They are not in that queue, no, because they're on a, they're on that lower industry where if anything, they're coming into the. So, the bigger farm is going up on that big highway up there, the, the littler projects are coming down on these little lines that run up down our road, so.
I appreciate that.
I mean.
I apologize for not being.
Like RMC, if you, if you put up panels on your roof and you're in the RMC zone, they don't buy your extra power.
Yeah.
They, they bank your extra power, but they won't buy it, but at Nippsico, last I had heard, that was a few years ago.
They were buying.
They will buy.
They are still, they are.
So, but again, you're not gonna. On that small scale, you're not going to throw up something that producing ten times the power. You need and, and throw that under grid thinking you're, it's just not going to happen.
Right.
And I believe Nippsico will tell you, or RMC will even tell you how much you can do or can't do.
Right.
And again, that's where I'd say I would give with Nippsico on, really what more, well, realistically, what kind of project you're looking at.
That's what, that's my question, that's, that's a question that I have, um, and maybe best answered by Nippsico is. What anticipatory needs in terms of scalability that we should probably be focusing on? You know, I started off this conversation saying farm because it's a scale, because it's on the everybody's mind, but if that's not, that's not the pressing issue, what can we anticipate? So, we can be a little bit ahead of the game, so we don't have that situation where we have, uh, an industry that we can't accommodate, right? Or that we are, we've written, we've written ordinance, is that our counter against that?
Yeah.
Well, and that's my point, where do we need to, that's a good point, and I mean, are we looking at large scale or medium scale in terms of servicing of somewhere like an academy or?
Realistically, you know what that zoning boundary is, and I don't think you're going to try and expand that.
No.
So, realistically, you know what kind of acreage you have and what kind of, and I would assume even Nippsico could go, well, you could put something here or something here, but reality is, if you're looking at rooftop here.
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice to know, like, what, how many, what a large scale or medium scale would accommodate, and that's a question that we should probably pursue.
Well, I was going to say, because you get, it feels like you're concentrating on, you know, this top two, four thousand acre plan, but there, you don't have four thousand acres here, you have a lot smaller.
Right. If, thanks, definitely.
Good point.
And as far as your smaller scale that we're talking about, as far as residential and all those others. I mean, that's going to be proposed in the application to start, that's right, so you're saying they get near the. New and everything else, so. I mean, as far as kind of.
So, you're brave, and you're going off the grid completely, I'm pretty sure you're going to need RMC or Nippsico's approval before you do something.
Yeah, but they're going to have to stop signing up before you get to us.
Right, they're not going to let you do something that's going to burn the grid up on their scales.
Especially if you want to sell it back.
Right, well, yeah, yeah, they, there's a whole operation of. Traffic lights, for lack of a better word, for power going one way or the other and all of those things, and, I mean, there's a whole operation there.
You, you know it too, when they flip it up at Nippsico, when you see the stacks starting to smoke that they've already. Bet you, I worked around that a lot.
I didn't know as far as concentrating so much on the residential thing like that, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot of detail that you need to look at on that.
Yes, we're, we, that's, that hasn't, there's no moratorium on any doing the residential or the rooftops in town. Our moratorium is strictly on large scale and industrial solar farms. But this also, this conversation also leads us into the battery storage units that we'll get to later, because when you have that excess, people are going to want to store that. And, and I, and I did hear Nippsico has lowered what they're paying per kilowatt. I, I heard that whatever, whatever their measure is, I heard that they're, they pay less than.
They're all going to go to the RMC system of, I ain't paying for it. You can do what you want, I ain't.
And I have no clue what regulations around that, or, again, with, maybe nice to have a Nippsico person come in and tell us how the grid works locally.
John works for Nippsico.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe, nice to have them tell us.
You're going to need that engineer guy at the Nippsico office that can really explain all of that. So, I mean, I honestly would go that direction and say. What do we need?
So, do you think he would possibly come in in our May meeting and give us a little presentation or?
Me, I don't even know who he is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but like.
I would.
I'll reach out and see if I can get some contacts and see if we can get that.
I would assume they would be eager to because they'd rather the town. Be heading in what they consider the right direction and not the wrong direction, whatever that is.
It needs to be able to get some answers.
So, for, for. So, for building permit application for solar energy systems. There's a list of ideas here, it's on the list, there's some ideas or thoughts, what needs to be on an application in that process that we may want to see. So, some of that solar system specifications, including manufacturer and model information, country of origin of all their equipment, materials they're bringing in. Module design and site plans, we already talked a little bit about that. Uh, business plan would also cover some of what we've talked about as far as the taxes and what kind of revenues that might bring to Culver. Which, that would only be on the large scale, anything less than this, than the farm, farm scale would probably not bring us much. First, we want a business plan and, uh, system components, panels, inverters, batteries, a list of all those, and. This is, this, again, these are taken out of other ordinances from other places.
Right.
These bullet points.
If we still.
So, they're just thoughts.
We're still discussing solar on the larger levels. And including farm and large levels, one of the things that have been mentioned is the, the, the tax. That's placed on our road system based upon the equipment coming in, can we, can we request a transportation plan and weights? So, we can anticipate.
But we would have to do that for everything. So, anybody that's taking large scale trucks up and down the road for any purpose.
And that's exactly what we did with, I think, the, for example, the dudes had to file a transportation plan.
Yeah.
And had to provide, end up with all the weights, and we've had conversations also about responsibilities of road repair and on, on their route. So, we've had that conversation.
Okay, well, that's.
I don't know.
Was that specific to the county?
Pardon me?
Is that specific to the county roads?
Uh, it's specific to all roads.
So, okay, the roads coming in.
For example, including Lake Shore, which is busting out, we have a hand up, yeah.
I would be very cautious of your weights and all weights and things because you still are an agricultural community, you still are going to have.
I agree.
Semis, combines.
I agree, but.
These things roaming up and down the road, and so you're going to be one, I mean, you're not going to want.
I do understand.
By hand Larry Miller from farming.
No, I don't, however, but if.
No, no, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, on a typical construction project, this scale, on scale, oftentimes, it's a requirement for them to file plans within dot to be, to provide a transportation plan with that. I don't know if we include that in here, I was just only suggesting it as a.
And that's more, and it's the concentration for a small amount of time.
Yeah, I guess I would say maybe put it. Agriculture.
I'm writing your clause on that. Are you telling me I have seventy more farmers?
Would that be a bone issue for, for the road, would that be going to Mother County because of county road?
Not, yeah, I'm not sure very, um, like, that's just a consideration.
Right now, the county's working also on road agreements along with bond agreements for the solar farms that are going in north of Culver.
Yeah, question, as far as when the system components, when it comes to the batteries, because a lot of talks about batteries.
Can we go to batteries at another time? Because that's, if we get through the solar part, then we could, then we can start doing the, do the fire part.
Just include it in the same order, so that can be.
They're two separate right now, we have them as two separate ordinances.
That would be one of my concerns.
I know when they added the additional. High tensile line across the county, the county botched that and they never repaired those roads. So, it is a good idea to just something.
In place. Just try to think ahead in terms of.
How to word it and all of those things.
Might be for mostly projects that are coming in, they're going to be high intensity for a very short period of time, opposed to farmers that are going to be doing this every fall, every winter, spring.
Yeah, and then for whatever reason, they didn't use the roads that logically made sense. They came down our road.
Just try.
All the time, and our road was just shattered.
For, for the sake of time.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll keep us moving since, since we have limited time, but yes, you're right.
I was agreeing, so.
Yes, you're, you're, you're right. Uh.
Thank you, Ben and Egg.
So, and, and then when it comes to the, to those road plans also, just a note on that too, right now, it's, that's going to take, it's going to take legal counsel.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're, we're not going to be able to do that.
No, we're not.
Well, I mean, we could, but we'll hold up for it.
We could put an idea forth, but it's still going to be legal counsel, it's going to have to, and, and counsel's going to, whatever we write before it goes anywhere. It, it's still going to, it's still going to go through legal to make sure that.
It's vetted.
That we are in compliance with state statutes. A complete building, so this, this bullet point here, thoughts on what you want to see on an application? Anything specific?
For the country of origin of all equipment that is being requested, is it? Necessary, or is it just that it's been vetted by whatever regulatory commissions would handle that in the United States, being inspected by, uh, an environmental board for the components that are in it that are going to actually hold the electrical charge, things like that? Or is it just, hey, this came from China, we don't know if it's been inspected by a US? Company, or not company, but government entity to say it's safe to put up.
Country of origin. But, but country of origin, in, in my perspective, is if twenty-six percent of their funding is coming from our tax dollars. I, I think we need to know if it's American made or we're, that money's going back to one of our adversaries like China.
I just wasn't sure if it was just to know where it was coming from, or if it was for quality assurance purposes.
I just don't know where it's coming from, uh, I'm not sure what the qual, I don't, I have no way of knowing how.
Because it's.
Quality would vary.
Yeah, you're going to get a car to build overseas, it's still going to meet American regulations in order to be on a road, and so.
It's a good question, any more, I mean, it's, what do we want to see on an application?
And it's minimum ninety percent recyclable, haven't been enforced, or how are you going to know what to recycle or not? Is that something we're going to throw out there, but are we going to prove or disprove?
That's what Marsh County Recycle, if you post it, it's all accepted.
Are we going to go through that?
Because we'd have to know the components, because that's a components breakdown, so we'd have to know.
Yeah.
What is going to be lead based and things like that.
I mean, yeah, I would say that when it comes to that, that's sort of like decommissioning. Or if I leave, would look toward what the state comes up to. As a percentage. Probably. That's recycled. I mean, ninety percent. It's a good number, I just don't. If we can reach it.
I don't disagree, because when you start putting in which components and things, it's going to make it a lot harder to break apart, like you can't recycle a motor as easily, even though you can recycle steel, you can recycle copper, but it's getting it all tore apart.
Okay, so I just heard on that was maybe tie that into the decommissioning part?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to see on an application? And if there's nothing else right now, when we put this back and continuously go over it, things may pop up. Hey, we have like two and a half minutes left.
We did down half a page. So, celebrate.
So, I'll type something up and I'll send it out to you that's updated, and if you want printed copies, I'm going to happen to get those to you as well.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your input, thank you.
Thank you.
It's appreciated, we're learning.
You might want to, on your recycle thing, I mean. Like we throw cans in the recycle bin, they're not necessarily a hundred percent recyclable, there might be, try to figure out what a realistic number to.
I think so, one of the things that makes it solar more powerful to people is the recyclability of the panels right now, they're, 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 they're improving that. Finding out more information on that might be interesting, before we set a, a standard for recyclability.
These are bullet points and sections taken out of a whole different other ones. So it's just to give us a starting.
Your country of origin might be challenging. Wanted to put them on your roof. If you want to do a small scale.
Yeah, that wouldn't pertain, I wouldn't think. I don't want to climb somebody's roof to take a look.
I'd just say because they're gonna have to try to get a quote and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's sometimes challenging for a small.
It is.
Working in construction, sometimes it's small pile is hard to get a country of origin on that versus.
I, I put it down after that, based on scale.
Let's check our secret show. Senator D will be coming around.
And somebody else took up our time.
Oh, don't start with the somebody else. Check out our time.
Okay. Next meeting's gonna be May twenty-first at five P M. So if there's any other closing comments. Then. Then I don't think we need to vote. We could just say we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
As you can tell, we're still learning. Bring everything, try to get it all dialed in. Thing works like it used to.
He just wrote that one up.
Okay.
The four o'clock meeting that I had.
Nothing but meetings going on.
Yeah.
So, uh. And they would engineer, they'd look at your house. First, I have, my house has all kinds of cables and everything, so we don't have a lot of flat. But they looked at it and they said they could do it and that it would have been a cost to us. So, uh, I said, well, the pennies for the panels. Well, the program is saying you, they will have these panels and then, and we'll send you up in the twenty-five year longer. To buy the panels and all the installation. Why it doesn't cost you anything? There you go. So it isn't, doesn't cost you anything. Doesn't cost you anything. And I said, ah, no, thank you. Yeah, you know, and I think those kind of guys are gonna be. Twenty-five hundred eight. Uh, right. Yeah, I think individually it's fine. The people need to know what it's gonna cost them too. And I said to the guy. Eighty-three years old, said he had that long bed up on a third date. He said, oh. Anyway, you know, that makes him sick. Yeah. Well, thanks.
Cheers.
Can you turn it up?
I, I did do that.
For all nationally for. I, it starts. But here, they go up the road, you might hit three fifteen, huh, three fifty, three. Not digital dynamite? How? I just went back to. I was supposed to put in just, and ask the, that could speed shop that I asked for, I had one of those together.
I'm Bob Solomon. That's the twenty seventeen. But you can do a lot of that.
Over three pounds. I know it put a lot more than that.
A lot more than that.
Yeah. I know it could lease that, but I put labor. All my labor was in that too.
The, the small block Chevys are easy to work down now.
I can't.
Used to be so cheap.
I didn't say cheap, I said easy.
Oh, easy. In it over years ago. And I set it up, I had set up with, uh, almost three thousand plants on the land. And I mean, we have like motorized. The trouble is I wound up cruising around town, thirty-five, forty mile an hour and spun bearings.
And bearings you got, you have to put roller bearings in it?
This one right here is that, it's the full rover cam, got all rovers, areas, roller rockers, everything.
I mean, that makes it better. That should help with your longevity.
It's active, I mean, it's longevity and everything and, you know, but less friction, I mean, less parts, right?
Yeah, it just depends how you drive it too, you know?